Good evening. It's 6:30 on August, uh, September 17th, 2024. I am calling this regular session of the Bastrop City Council to order. The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call the executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We are very pleased tonight to have two outstanding students from the Bluebonnet Elementary School Safety Patrol. We have Yolanda Lara, stand up, and Andy Cox, and they will be leading us in the pledge. Young ladies, if you'll step up here, will everybody else please stand?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, and the legislature of the city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. Thank y'all so much. And like I said, he's gonna take pictures. Y'all get ready. Look pretty. Well, you're already there. Thank you so much. If you'll remain standing, we're gonna have one of our outstanding police chaplains, Reverend Phil Woods, who's going to come and lead us in prayer.
Father, we come before you tonight just to give you praise and thanksgiving for the privilege to live here in Bastrop and all the wonderful blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Tonight, we lift up all those employees that serve us so well, our police, fire department, EMS, those that work in our various offices. We just lift them up before you tonight and ask special blessings. Lord, upon our mayor and city council, as they go through the agenda that's before them tonight, Lord, we just pray for wisdom from above. Lord, as they go through the budget, the things that will affect us as we move into a new year, we just ask that you just guide us and direct us. You know the future, and we just need your wisdom in making those decisions. And we just give you praise tonight, for you're a great God, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. We will move on to presentations. I'm gonna do a little bit of change on my presentation. I'm gonna be imploring, begging, asking. We, uh, our appointments to boards and commissions is somewhat delayed because up until this week, I had 19 applications to fill 43 positions. And just my high school math says that doesn't compute quite that well. Subsequent to last week, I now have 26 applications. And we're really looking for applications in bridging Bastrop Board, our Historic Landmark Commission, Hunter's Crossing, our library is fulfilled. Thank you. Parks, our planning and zoning, and our zoning board of adjustments. If you or anybody listening would like to fill out or like to participate on one of our boards and commissions, please go online to the city of Bastrop under Boards and Commissions. There's an application process there, and we will certainly consider you and hopefully engage you in the citizen advisory groups. It means so much to what we do here in the city. Although, we did have our State of the City address last night. I'm gonna save that, because I think it's a, it's a, our city manager's story to tell, and she's under the weather, so we're gonna delay her talking about that until she returns. We also had an event that the majority of council went to, a fundraiser for Feed the Need. It was a very successful, very loud fundraiser, and we, we think that it's part of doing the large work and what they're doing, and we like, we appreciate being able to participate. That being said, that concludes the mayor's report. Mayor Protem, do you have anything you wish to add?
Yes, Mayor. So, just wanted to thank everyone for the State of the City thing last night, the Chamber of Commerce, for doing all of the administrative things to, to bring that about as they seek to add advocacy to their set of things that they do, and as they search for their fifth star for, to become a five-star Chamber of Commerce. But it was a great meeting. Everyone said very good, positive things about it, very well informed, and I just, yeah, wanna thank everyone who helped make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fossler.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I also attended the Feed the Need Gala, and it was awesome. I've never been before, and the room was full, and the donations were flowing, and I was very happy for them. I wanted to let y'all know that the Bastrop Music Festival is coming up September 26th through the 29th. I think the early bird tickets are still $35, and then they go up from there. But, so that is like two weekends from now, September 26th through 29th. That same weekend is the Lost Pines Knife Show at the Convention Center. And if you haven't been, it is really cool. There's like tomahawk throwing and things on fire all over, and it is really, really cool. And also, the Master Gardener Fall Plant Sale is gonna be October 5th at the Mayfest Show Barn. And our Neighbor Night Out is gonna be on October 1st. I know we have a council meeting that night, so we'll have to talk about that, but that's our neighbor night out. So, we'll have to figure that out. Maybe we'll have a short meeting that night. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett. Sounds like everybody's doing good so far, so I'll pass. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to tell the citizens about, and remind you that this coming Friday, the Bastrop Live Music Foundation has the songwriter showcase, and it's gonna be the Cur Center from 7:00 to 8:30. And it's just a great time to, to hear some good music, but also for community to go out and, and just engage. So, that's 7:00 to 8:30 this Friday, Cur Center. Minimum, they just ask for a donation and $5, so you can't do anything for $5. So, that's Friday. But then Saturday's some more great music, because it's music in the museum from noon to 2 o'clock. And it's gonna be Jeff Haney and Barney Sledge. And if you've never heard Jeff and Barney, Barney is amazing in the harmonica and vocals, and then Jeff is a guitar wizard and vocals also, so make sure you hit them up. So, you got two fun days of music you can hit up, and that's a free show.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So, pretty much did everything that everyone else has done. I do want to point out, the Feed the Need Gala, that was the first time I'd ever been to that gala. And when I first walked in, I couldn't figure out if I was overdressed or underdressed. There were people in costumes, and there were people in ballgowns. But it was a really good night. They really know how to put a party on, I'll say that. Watching an auction is always fun. And then I'm excited that they're going to, hopefully be opening up on Wednesdays right over here at the, um, at the former market to serve the community. Anyone's welcome to come out for burgers and hot dogs. I have offered to volunteer, so I'm looking forward to being able to help that organization. There were some very, very inspirational speeches and videos played that, if you watched them, there's no way you wouldn't wanna help that organization and volunteer and give back. So, great job on that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the library programming. There is an adult programming now, twice a week, for people who love Dungeons and Dragons. So, if you are in Dungeons and Dragons, I didn't even know that was still around. They meet twice a week. Call the library, and they'll give you the times. They're also doing beginning sewing classes for kids in October. So, if you have kids interested in sewing, you'll wanna check that out for them. And they are in need of both volunteers and board members. So, if you're interested in serving on that board, please contact the library. As always, I wanna recognize the Opera House. Their production of Young Frankenstein has two more weeks. If you're interested in catching that production, it ends on September 29th, and they, they are selling out, so you'll wanna get tickets for that. And I do wanna talk about the State of the City, because it was a very good, an informative event, if you missed it. And I believe they're, they're, they recorded it, and it will be played on social media or our city website. You'll be able to watch it after the fact. But I wanna applaud the Chamber of Commerce staff for their participation, and our partners in the community, who also took the time to do videos. Our city manager, from day one, I have always told our city manager that I was shocked at the amount of knowledge that she has about Bastrop. I literally have to put an address in my GPS to get to locations in Bastrop, and she came in knowing every corner of this city, and last night's presentation shows that. So, she's not here. She's watching from home. I really appreciate the wealth of knowledge that you took the time to learn about our city and the plat, as I call it, for a path forward, for the growth that we're expecting. Thank you so much for a wonderful job.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Under Agenda Item Number Five, Staff and Work Sessions and Briefings, there are none. Our outstanding Assistant City Manager had alerted me to don't put him on the spot. This is time for the City Manager's Report. Is this the ACM's report?
This is the ACM's report, yes, sir. Mayor, Council, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Yes, as you've mentioned, the State of the City was last night. Sylvia did a fantastic job. She'll speak more about that later when she returns. But there will be a video from the State of the City. It'll be posted on our website, Facebook, YouTube. Sometime tomorrow afternoon, I got a nod from Colin when I walked over there a second ago. So, tomorrow afternoon, they'll get that posted, and you'll see that. Last item is Sit with Seal. It's still on for tomorrow night here at City Hall at 6:30 PM. She'll have a very specific topic that she wants to cover, which is short-term rentals, as well as any other topics. As everybody knows, you can just shoot a question to her, and she'll answer. But Sit with Seals at 6:30 PM tomorrow night here at City Hall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We will now move into Agenda Item Seven, Citizen Comments. Madam City Secretary, I have two citizen comments set up. Do we have any additional?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you so much. The first one who has signed up to speak is Brett Douglas. If you will approach the podium, give your name and address. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. I'm also a very big fan of Dungeons and Dragons. My name is Brad Douglas, 906 Main Street. I'm chairman of Bastrop Pride. I'm excited to welcome two members to fill our vacant spots of vice chair and treasurer. These additions have renewed the board's commitment to Bastrop County in creating and growing the LGBTQIA+ plus community for their members, their families, their friends, and of course, our allies. After a successful annual Pride Festival in historic downtown Bastrop, the group has focused on several ongoing projects. Bastrop Pride has joined the Austin LGBT Chamber of Commerce and is excited to invite other Bastrop County businesses and organizations to join us. You can email us at info@bastroppride.org to find out more. This is a great opportunity for not only nonprofits, but for businesses as well. On the second-to-last Tuesday of each month, this Tuesday, Bastrop Pride's Education Coordinator is hosting the topic. It's, it's, this is an offering to the community, which provides a variety of discussions, art projects, education, and resources. And the next topic is scheduled for October 22nd. For more information and future dates, go to bastroppride.org. You'll probably hear me say that a couple of times. Gotta get that stuck in your mind. Starting in October, Bastrop will benefit as the newest location for PFLAG Austin. PFLAG is a facilitator, a facilitator-led support group that provides a safe space to discuss personal issues, ask questions, share experiences, advice, anything. The PFLAG meetings will be held on the first Tuesday of every month, and the first one is October 1st at the Cavalry Church at the Parish Hall, and we will be just throwing a launch party. This will be just a meeting greet. We'll have some snacks. But again, this will be October 1st at 6:30 or 6:45 PM at the Parish Hall at Cavalry Church. Come and just meet us and chit chat with us. And a big, big thanks to Cavalry Church for providing the space for Bastrop Pride to grow and host these events and meetings and groups. Their ongoing support has truly been appreciated, and we feel very blessed because of it. Bastrop Pride has ongoing weekly and monthly events in which folks can participate, including casual social activities and fun educational events. We're excited about our new youth programs coming next spring, and of course, please go to bastroppride.org for more information to stay connected and updated, become a volunteer, help us do what we're trying to do, and again, visit us at bastroppride.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person scheduled to speak is Jo Stowe. She has some concerns. If she's listening, I will be passing her concern off to our city staff. We will now move to our consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to pull an item off the consent agenda here at the dais? Councilmember Fossler.
8A, if you could move, pull 8A, please.
Councilmember Lee.
8B.
And I'm going to pull 8C for discussion. Well, that takes care of the consent agenda. We will now take action. On 8A, consider an act to approve the Bastrop City Council meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, regular meeting. Councilmember Fossler.
I'm looking it up right here. Let's see. As usual, it was just a minor change. It was under the city manager's report. It seemed like there was a part that was like copy and pasted from what she was wanting to talk about tonight also, that just needs to be struck. It was, I'm looking for the exact page number. Oh, under 6A, if you could delete one. I guess she didn't cover that last time. That's all. Move to approve.
Do you have that, Madam City Secretary? Okay, we have a motion to approve item 8A.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated. Councilmember Lee, did you want to discuss it more? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 8B. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-32, granting the extension of the master plan expiration of Reed Ranch Plan Development District, being 24.04 acres, as the Nancy Blakely survey has shown an attachment to, located at 615 West Highway 71, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, provided for findings of fact, provided for repealer, provided for severability, provided for enforcement, provided for proper notice and meeting, and established an effective date. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, under the reason for extension, I've enlisted two bullet points, and one of the bullet points said the extension of Blakely Lane from Lowe's over to Riverside Grove, and then its connection down to Old Austin Highway. During the budget workshop, we talked about the GLO grant for that extension, and Councilmember Plunkett asked if the environmental clearance was going to eat up the grant, and you guys were gonna come back. So, I just wanted to know if you had gotten any information regarding that.
We still, we had a quick meeting last week with the GLO. They are pondering our question, and they were gonna push it up and then get back with us. We should have an answer this week. I'm not for sure exactly when this week, but we, we should have an answer back from GLO.
Okay. That was all I had.
And then once we get that answer, we'll, we'll disperse to everybody.
Okay, great. Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Cynthia Myers?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I put two Cynthias. Carrie Fossler?
Yes.
And John Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. On item 8C, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-28, meaning the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 813.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Section 813-02-002, Wastewater Service Charges, and 813-02-04, Water Service Charge, as attached in Exhibit A, Provided for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repealer, Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, Codification, Proper Notice, and Meeting. Mr. Assistant City Manager, my, my question was, what are we specifically looking to study? The usage rates, or the impact fees, and are we going to get a similar report such as NewGen has provided on fees?
I believe our CFO can answer.
Yep. So, we had a study done in 2019, and I may be updated in '22, that these rates came from. We're having a new study done for '26 through '31, so it doesn't, it will not affect these numbers. These are still using the previous rate. But we did have an impact fee study done also, and it should be presented in November-ish. Does that answer your question?
That, that answered it perfectly. I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay, I've had my question answered. I entertain a motion? Oh, you had a question? I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, to his point about a presentation, because previously, NewGen would do a presentation. Are we anticipating receiving a presentation from NewGen?
Yes, you will get a presentation from NewGen, yes. And I believe the city manager showed a little bit of that presentation at the last budget session, but yes, you will get a full-on presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Now, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Councilmember Meyer, I'm so sorry.
It's fine. No, motion to approve. How about that?
I have a, I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the items for individual consideration. I have on item 9A, I have a potential conflict of interest in that I'm a property owner in Hunter's Crossing, as well as sit on the local government corporation board, so I have turned in the appropriate paperwork to our city secretary, recusing myself from this agenda item. I will pass the gavel to Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Well, I didn't know that was coming.
Surprise.
Yep. So, 9A, so let's read this. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-23, approving the updated service plan, including provisions related to assessments for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving the fiscal year 2024 assessment role for the district, and containing other provisions related to the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor Protem and members of the council, you may remember at our last meeting, you approved on first reading the ordinance. We had some several questions from the council that we weren't able to handle at the last meeting, so we've arranged for the lawyer that's been engaged by the city to work with us on the Hunter's Crossing pit issue, George Hyde, and he made himself available to be here tonight as a resource and try to answer some questions and offer some guidance. So, I direct you to George Hyde.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hyde, let's see here. Can you give us kind of an overview of the PID? So, I know that we have a maintenance and operations assessment, which can change on a yearly basis. We have the capital assessment that, I don't know if it can change based on interest rates or if it's fixed, but you know, that's, that's each homeowner that has not yet paid all of theirs off, has to pay that on a yearly basis. There are some questions about how the commercial properties are impacted in all of these same discussions. And then there's also, people seem to be puzzled by the division of responsibilities between the PID and the homeowners association. So, can you kind of just give us an overview of?
Sure.
How all that works?
Well, once upon a time, in a galaxy far, far away, is the way I probably should start. But before I do that, I was nine years old the first time I was introduced to Dungeons and Dragons. And back then, it was nerdy, and now it's cool. So, so go figure.
It's still nerdy, but...
I'm still not cool. No, no, no. Yeah, I'm, I'm still that nine-year-old. So, I'm, I'm sorry to digress. So, the, this PID has a number of unique things to, to it. And in 2016, I was engaged on your behalf by the Texas Municipal League and our governmental risk pool to defend you in a, in a case with regards to flooding at Hunter's Crossing that was brought by 15 residents. And in that case, we were fortunate that our plea to the jurisdiction indicated that the claims that were made in that case are not claims that can be brought against a local government entity, and those change, those claims were dismissed on our part. About three years later, it ultimately got resolved with, because they sued TechDOT, they sued the county, they sued all the engineers involved, they sued just about anyone that ever touched the PID from a professional standpoint in that case. And so, that was my first introduction to Hunter's Crossing PID. And then in 2017, the, the city staff was having a difficulty reconciling how the PID was supposed to operate based on the, the original service and assessment plan, which had not been changed since 2003, when it was created. And I need to regress one back. Incidentally, this PID was created on the evening of 9/11. And so, a day that does live in infamy, for other reasons, of course. But I just found it odd that the city council actually, because it was posted, they had a city council meeting on that night and approved this PID. But because of the struggles, you can see why in, in 2001, it was approved, but it wasn't until March of 2003, until the first service and assessment plan was, was developed and approved by the city council. Back then, typically, the way that these were developed is that the developers' legal counsel would develop the materials because of the costs associated with developing these, and then they would submit them to the city for approval. And so, any PID that was created back from 2007 before then typically had some concerns or issues with regards to complete compliance with Chapter 372. In my experience since, I guess, 2005, I think is when I first learned what PID stood for. So, so in the, in this process, one of the things which both the District Court and the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals in the litigation that came from the 2019 issue was that they did recognize that the, the city of Bastrop did not meet its obligation to create annual service assessment plans and to adjust those plans as the property was subdivided. And so, what typically occurs in a public improvement district is that the, there's an allocation of cost based on engineering probable cost estimates as to the amount of, of infrastructure, water, road, you know, wastewater, district drainage, et cetera. All of that is going to be to cost in order to build the project. And something that is no longer allowed under state law today, but was allowed at the time, is that the property owner was excused from having to pay PID costs until such time the property was sold to a builder and then sold to the first property owner that was going to live there. So, the PID allocations and PID costs did not begin to run in the PID until such time somebody bought the property. And so, in, you know, I think in 2005 was the first property owner, and then as more properties, you know, homes were built and, and properties were established, then additional allocations were being ran based on a default list that was inaccurate with regards to how PIDs operate. So, there was communication during that time period and for years after that that indicated that public improvement districts have an expiration date, and that's not consistent with the law then, and it's not consistent with the law today. As you may know, what state law requires for a public improvement district to be dissolved is a petition to be approved and accepted by the governing body with 51% of the property owners. And I'm, I can't remember off the top of my head now whether it's by acreage or square feet or by specific owners. Typically, it's done by property. There's 289 acres in the PID. And that 51% makes that petition, and then the city council considers that. And if the city council accepts the petition for dissolution, then that allows the dissolution of the PID, but not in... the dissolution of the pit, but not until all debts associated with the operation of the pit and the capital expenditures are exhausted. And so it does not change the fact that there's an obligation. Many pids have, uh, are, are initially funded through bonds, and so you would imagine that in the middle of a bond, if you were to just dissolve a pit and there's bondholders and security exchange going on, that would not be a good investment. So they, they do require that you pay all of your, your debts before the, the pit goes away. There are a number of pids in Texas that I've handled that, um, we call them zero MNO pids, because the, um, the, they haven't been dissolved because, you know, it's like herding cats sometimes, depending on the number of people that live in a pit and, and own property in the pit, to get fifty-one percent to agree on anything. But that being said, the, um, a, a zero MNO pit is one where each year it comes back, there are no more, um, approved infrastructure projects, and there are no more maintenance or operation costs associated with it. That typically occurs in pids that have a very minimal, um, allocation of obligation to the district itself. If you just are doing roads, water, wastewater, drainage, and then once it's developed, that's then transferred to the city like other developments typically see, then there would be no other costs associated with that type of pit. But because it can't be dissolved, each year, we take this prophylactic job because state law requires us to, and, and the city council will adopt a zero-dollar pit as a service assessment plan, uh, because it's, hasn't been dissolved. So here, what happened is, is that there was a projected allocation of cost that was provided in the two thousand three service and assessment plan, which had a column of years, and it had a column of fees. But the co- the years and the fees were not, I, I'll say that they were ambiguous with regards to how they operated. And so initially, when the pit started operating, um, the year was shown as like the, the year that you bought the property, and then it showed an allocation of what the pit assessment was going to be for that year. But because pit assessments were not set yet, this whole concept was just a plan. It provided, I think it was over seventy acres of commercial property. We ended with thirty-three. It provided for about a fourth of the existing drainage facilities, and because it needed a lot more drainage, so there was properties that were going to be co- commercial and multifamily that were moved into the non-benefited property because that property supports all the others. The, um, there was four hundred and eighty-four residential, uh, homes that were planned in the concept. There were five hundred and fourteen milt. And so there was a change in more residential, less commercial. Um, and then the other thing in the middle of this is two thousand eight happened. And, you know, we all know that as the credit crisis that significantly changed the housing market in the United States. And so I, I think that there's a combination of those elements that occurred while this pit was growing that, uh, stunted it, for lack of a better term. And, uh, and so as the properties were subdivided and, and a, a plat was, you know, for the first hundred homes or a plat for some of the commercial property was done, what a, uh, public improvement district is supposed to do is to evaluate what the total special benefit is being provided to that type of property, and then allocate the total costs to, of, of capital improvements to that property based on that special benefit. That wasn't done until the twenty-seven, uh, twenty-nineteen, um, uh, service and assessment plan, when you were almost built out. So that was one of those things that the Fifth Circuit did find critical with regards to the work here. However, there is, unless there is a penalty provision in a statute for purposes that clearly and ambiguously waive sovereign immunity, um, then there is no cause of action that can be brought in, uh, for purposes of failing to meet that requirement. So it's, it's something that is subject to mandamus. So for instance, if someone said, "You're not doing this. I want a court order that make you do it," you can do that. Though, those are the types of claims that bring an obligation that you have by law that you didn't do. But to sue for damages or to sue for invalidity are typically not, uh, allowed for those kind of claims. Um, so while the court was critical with regards to the failure, they looked, the challenge was on the twenty-nineteen service and assessment plan, not the fact that other service and plus assessment plans were not done properly. So the, uh, kind of the next phase was that from twenty-seventeen to twenty-nineteen, uh, I worked with first, the, um, the original developer had sold it to a second developer who did most of the development, and then it was sold to TF Hunter, uh, Limited Partnership, who finished, um, the very last parts of the roads in the, in their, during that time period. And it is then when we, uh, in seventeen, when I started negotiating, that, that we had this, this debacle. First of all, from two thousand three to two thousand seventeen, um, only about two million dollars of the eleven million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars was paid off. Because as they started to collect funds, you know, if they only had fifty homes, and then the amount of property here, that, that the costs had to wind up until the property, the more the property was built out, the more assessment payments were made, because remember that the developer didn't have to pay, and then the builder didn't have to pay. So these were all prolonged. So when, when I started the discussion, I identified every nook and cranny that I could find as a basis to attack the developer with regards to the, the validity of this eleven million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar debt. And in doing so, we went through issues. I told them we wanted no interest because the, the, the original pit apply, are allowed for interest. It was about seven percent plus a one-half percent, uh, reserve fund for issuing bonds. And none of that interest had ever been calculated. And so we fought for the pit and for the citizens here to say that you don't, you're not entitled to that. This item is, is screwed up in the se- service and assessment plan. It's never been allocated, um, so you don't get interest. And that created, uh, impasse for about three or four months where the discussion stopped. And then finally, they bailed out, said, "Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do that." They flinched first. And then we started looking at the costs and the assessments, and again, um, we advocated because of certain, uh, infirmities with regards to the, the funds and the, and the proof, and we reduced the amount of the capital improvement, uh, four-point-four million dollars. So instead of owing almost ten, you immediately went down to seven, seven and a half. And we did that through that two years of, of fighting and cussing and discussing this issue until we were able to find what we believed would be the best, um, solution without having to go into litigation, um, by saving the people over four and a half million dollars, by removing any interest that would ever was, was anticipated in the original service set, but removing it for, for the property owners. And, um, and then we restated the public improvement district so that it was consistent with state law. We re, we allocated using the same methodology in two thousand three that was adopted by the city council. Uh, so we reallocated the, uh, funds or the, uh, uh, ser- the pit debt to the property based on the residential versus this multifamily and versus the commercial, both capital and , uh, maintenance and operations. I understand that there is some question with regards to the cost associated with the commercial properties and what they're having to do. The original methodology for purposes of the commercial was that all this property there, so in, I guess it was two thousand eight or nine, there was a lawsuit that the city was embroiled into over what they called the ninety-nine percent impervious cover lot, because they had improved the, the lot, but they had only one percent of impervious cover. And so there was a, a battle over whether that was appropriate or not, and that through a settlement agreement, the, um, the property that was draining was allowed to drain, um, into the, the pit drainage area. And then the, uh, and then as we went forward though, none of that was taken into account with regards to the development, because the development had already been, um, approved. The infrastructure and so forth had all been, been approved. As we fast forwarded throughout the process, because they didn't allocate the cost per property owner, then under the law, there's something called joint and several liability, which means that if, you know, the, the city council and I all go together and we buy a piece of property together, and we have undivided interests, and then something happens on the property, then we're all equally responsible for whatever the liability is, even though we had nothing to do with it, or some of us had nothing to do with this and some of us did. So without the debt, which was secured through the district reimbursement agreement over the hundred, two hundred and eighty-nine acres, the debt was joint and severally obligated to be paid by every property owner. And so if you wanted to pay off your pit before we fixed it, um, you had to pay the nine-point-eight million dollars to get your property out, but in doing so, you would have gotten everybody else's property out. That was the problem that we fixed in twenty-nineteen.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you're on that subject, so I don't lose track. How did Home Depot pay off?
I'm sorry?
How did Home Depot pay off and when did they pay off?
So Home Depot, I think they paid like one-point-two or one-point-four, but they really didn't pay it. What they did is the, the Home Depot was sold prior to the development of the pit, and so the cost of the pit for purposes of capital improvements and was, was done as part of the, the, um, the purchase. And so there was a one-point-three or one-point-four million dollar contribu- developer contribution. So the eleven-point-nine had already had one, like the one-point-three million dollars deducted from the actual costs. And so that's why Home Depot was excluded from the capital obligations because their actual land transaction occurred, um, and, and was a contribution by the developer who sold the property to Home Depot. Um, so when we go back through this, um, we look at the original approved, two thousand three approved, um, uh, methodology, because that's how the pit was created, and we stuck with that methodology, which was to, um, for commercial and multifamily, had a greater overall percentage of cost because they got the greater overall percentage of benefit. And that benefit came from off-site detention and drainage. So when a typical developer, and you may already know this, but for purposes of the audience as well, when they come to develop property, they have to create onsite detention. And so that the water that comes off their property is not supposed to go off their property at any higher speed or in any higher volume than when the property was greenfield and not improved. Whether that's true or not is up to an engineer. The city doesn't have the ability to look back into an engineer's stamp on these rules, and sometimes I think there's some fudge in those, in my twenty-five, twenty-eight experience, years of experience doing this work. But never that, that being said, um, so the, the process with regards to the, the drainage, say that you own one and a half acres, and a quarter of an acre of that property would have needed to be set aside for drainage and retention. So that's a quarter of acre of property you bought that you can't use for a property return on investment. It becomes serviceable. But with off-site detention and using a regional detention facility, then you can use that quarter acre to improve your property and get a higher return on investment for commercial property every year. You know, if you're a multifamily property and you can build three more apartments or six more apartments, well, those are six more apartments that you can rent and six more apartments of, of rent prop- rental costs you're able to gain because you didn't have to put detention or retention on your property. The, s- the flip side of that, though, is that typically in a, a non-pit routine regional ma- uh, regional detention facility, is that what goes with that is an ordinance by the city council that allocates the maintenance of that drainage facility to the properties it serves. And it's done that way because if we had required them to put the detention on their lots, they would have had an obligation to maintain their own detention. And so the fact that now we've taken it off their lots to an off deti- off-site detention facility, comparatively to the, to the group, they actually pay less as a group to maintain one larger facility than how many ever individual drainage facilities they would have. But because that return on investment occurs every year for the commercial and the multifamily properties, they had a much higher benefit than the residential properties who only get to use those areas if it's not raining and if they're maintained for the recreational facilities that were supposed to be put in the drainage areas. Um, so, so that is one of the biggest distinctions that sometimes people forget, is that, that if they didn't have the ra- regional detention pond, they would not have as much commercial property or multifamily property from which they'd make money on every year. So that was, in the reasonable discretion of the original council in two thousand three, one of the reasons why there was a disparity in the overall maintenance and operation costs, because there's so much more cost associated with maintaining the detention areas versus the rest of the pit. And they primarily benefited the commercial and multifamily properties, because as you know, all of us that live in homes, there isn't a detention pond at our house. Um, it's, it's normal to have a, a regional detention pond for residential sub- subdivisions. So, so that was the reasonable and legitimate allocation of costs that the Judge Pittman at the, at the federal district court here in Austin, when I tried the case, and the three-panel Fifth Circuit Court judges that affirmed the case in the Fifth Circuit, found to be a reasonable allocation of costs. So right now, the way the methodology that is used, which is required by three seventy-two, the actual application of that methodology has been approved through the court system all the way to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. And the only thing above that is the U.S. Supreme Court. They didn't appeal that way, so this is a final judgment which is enforceable. It's also the only case in the Fifth Circuit or in Texas history to have a due process claim with regards to the assessment of, of a pit. So you've made a novel issue of law, no longer novel. So from, from twenty-nineteen forward, during the litigation, we went forward with the ordinance because the ordinance was not declared invalid. Once we completed that, and I think it was two thousand, was it twenty-one? I think in twenty-one is when we finished. Close to, close that way, when we got the Fifth Circuit to affirm and the case was over, we continued with the local government corporation, since I served as their general counsel. We continued to use the methodology that has been proven and has been, um, stamped with the court's approval for purposes of the remaining costs associated with the, the If, and I understand the city council is considering making a contribution with regards to the, the pit, and let's, I want to talk about that a little bit. First of all, the original pit and the pit that was, uh, modeled after, that was approved, indicated specifically, because there's a requirement that if the city was going to have an obligation to pay any funds to the pit, that that's in the pit document, and that's not currently in the service and assessment plan that was recommended by the, the, um, the, uh, board. Now, secondly, is that if you take, remember that the law requires us to allocate the special benefit of the improvements to the different property owners. So if you were to take, um, your legislative discretion to modify the service and assessment plan to, um, to reduce a, a benefit to one property, you would need to reallocate the remaining costs based on that benefit to all the properties in the pit. And that requires a new methodology, and that methodology should be in writing. It should be recitals that the city council adopts, that this is our methodology. And then that is the legal support for purposes of your decision, so that... so that we can show that you used reasonable judgment in your legislative authority to adopt that rule. And we don't have that today. So, based on the circumstances, my legal recommendation, to the extent I've given it in public, is to stick with what you know for this year and adopt the recommended service and assessment plan that the board offered you originally. But that doesn't end the story. There's more than one way to resolve. And if you're a little creative as a lawyer, you can find ways to get you to what you want, if you just let us, as your lawyer, be the navigator to get you to your destination.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
No.
Because I know it's a lot of stuff. But at our last meeting last week, there were three options. And one was to say, it's too late, we're going to go with the assessments. The second one was to split it, as we're saying, and I'm sure we have record and you have the numbers on that, to split it. And the third was just to try to have no assessments, which is not a possibility. But just to speed things up, I want, the only way to dissolve the PID is for the petition of the people to do that, correct? There is still going to be debt that has to be paid.
The dissolution does not take effect until all the debts are paid?
And I understand that. But the MNO is where the big problem is. And it's not proportionate with every woman I've spoken to, especially the commercial, it's just, it's, this has been, whatever has happened in the past is what I am absolutely not in favor of doing, because this has been a mess from the beginning. And I know you weren't here at the beginning, so I'm not putting it on you. But to continue to do the same thing would be insanity to me. So, we have to come up with a resolution right now, until, for now, as we said it at the last meeting, until we can get this worked out. And that resolution, as I understood it last week, and Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was to split the baby, as Sylvie would say, and work on for next year. Is that correct?
Councilmember Meyer, I don't know what the recommendation was. I know we discussed options.
Yeah.
And a capital contribution, perhaps dedicated toward the mowing aspect of the MNO, was one thing that was discussed. At some point, we may want to have a briefing from our assistant city manager.
And also ED2, do you have those numbers? Because last week, we did the 200, or maybe you do, Andreas. It was 200, and I did the math back here, and I don't have my numbers on it, but.
Councilmember, I have a resolution for that, if you'd like me to continue.
Sure.
So, I understood about 15 minutes before this meeting that that occurred. And so, what my recommendation would be is that if the city council wants to make some type of contribution towards the costs associated with the maintenance and operations, is that the local government corporation is a Chapter 461 of the Transportation Code organization. It operates to aid you in taking care of governmental interest and your governmental services. And the amount of money of which you can fund your local government corporation is within your discretion, and it has nothing to do with the service and assessment plan. And so, if you were to adopt the service and assessment plan this year, as it is, and then make a contribution to your local government corporation with a resolution that requests that they use this in a certain way, which is to defray operation and maintenance costs associated with this, then it hasn't changed, but I think you've gotten to where your goal is. Then, that gives us the opportunity, the time that we don't have right now, because of the deadline, to go back into the service and assessment plan and do what you really ultimately want to have the final fix, which is, take this out, look at how the allocations, everybody's overall maintenance and operations costs will go down. The ones that are paying more significant will go down more significantly than the ones that are paying less. And then, we can come back with next year's service and assessment plan with that in place, so then you can go confidently forward with your findings of fact and your, you know, for purposes of supporting the methodology, with the question as to whether this would cause what's called a reassessment, which reassessments trigger certain due process requirements, public hearings, advance notices and so forth, that you don't have right now. And so, that's why my legal recommendation is that you pass the service assessment plan as it was recommended by the board. Then, you can, in a different meeting, at a different time, your next meeting, you could do a budget allocation that goes to the local government corporation with that resolution. And then, the local government corporation would have the ability to apply those funds for purposes of this. And then, that next year, those funds would be on hand, which would even further reduce the potential assessment for your citizens and the commercial and the multifamily, because they're all in the PID.
And I understand what you're saying. But before, I would agree on passing anything that is anything close to what we have, which I don't agree on. I want the language to specifically state that we are taking on what we discussed last week at the meeting as to what you're saying. And I want the, we need to get the numbers, because we need to make sure what the split is on that. But a while ago, you also mentioned freeze, or zero MNO. So, what is that? How does that look?
That is what occurs after all of the capital infrastructure is paid off and there is no further obligation, which is another option that I wanted to present to you. Another means by which to avoid this obligation, it still doesn't change the service and assessment plan now, because we just don't have that time, but is that the local government corporation could convey the drainage facilities to the city. We could dedicate them to the city. Once they're dedicated to the city, those facilities are now public. They're not part of the, they're not owned by the local government corporation. It's no longer an obligation of the PID to maintain those. And they become public infrastructure, of which you have the discretion to do whichever you want to. But it also means that you have the obligation to maintain those. But that maintenance is different than in a PID. The maintenance for purposes of drainage is something that's within your discretion. And 101055 of the Texas Torque Claims Act gives you that discretion, so that if you don't have enough money to go around to clean all of your drainages at the same time, to the same level, that you're not responsible for that issue, because you don't have the money to do it. That's a legislative decision of which you're not tortuously responsible for. And so, that would be another means by which that there would be an allocation towards this PID, where we would then immediately be able to transfer that. And so, that cost would not be done in this now service and assessment plan year. And so, those funds that would have occurred this year would be excess funds for purposes of application in your next service and assessment plan and get you to the same goal that you're trying to get to. But once you get the capital done, and if you decide, and if you, at that point, you want to transfer all of the property to the city that the public improvement currently has an obligation to maintain, then that can be something that the local government corporation does. And then, you would have all obligations of maintenance and obligation, where you would have a $0 PID MNO from that place forward.
Mayor Proton, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Thank you for coming. I've probably heard bits and pieces of this story over the last five years. And with the help of the city manager and yourself today, it brought a lot of clarity, more clarity to some of the questions. In terms of the assessment, I do want to remind council that the PID, the board approved the assessments. And the members that I've talked to from the board understand that the assessments need to go through. And if we don't approve the assessments and that gets delayed, it ends up hurting them in the long run, because no bills are being paid, right? And the city to an extent, correct?
So, well, the problem becomes that you have a reimbursement obligation. Who now, the entity that owns that now is ORX. And I've litigated with the ORX in the last couple of years. And if they have an anticipated recovery from the capital improvements and the associated MNO that supports those improvements, they're going to want to get paid. And they will have no hesitancy to sue for declaratory judgment to get that money. So, I think that to change direction with regards to the methodology right now would be, would have the highest potential legal risk.
Right.
But I'm confident that even earlier than next budget year, we can develop something within a few months even, that you could adopt early for a service and assessment plan going forward.
Right.
That could involve a transfer of certain properties or transfer of all that property to the city, so that way, there's no longer any MNO.
So, one of the biggest questions was, why is the MNO? Where did the 5.4 million come from for the MNO? That was, that no one's been able to explain what factored into that cost. How did it become 5.4? It would take 12 years, I calculated in my bad math, to pay off, pay that 5.4. And then, it was, the MNO would still carry on after that. So, you just explained that part of your process and thinking is, because that was one thing I suggested at the last meeting, is there a way to reevaluate the needs of Hunter's Crossing to bring that 5.4 down, so that it doesn't look like they're paying MNO in perpetuity, but it does reduce the amount of the MNO to the resident?
So, this has been one of the very consistent misconceptions that's happened throughout the project, both for the capital cost and the MNO. $5.4 million was the projected cost for 20 years of the PID in maintenance and operation. And the reason why it was likely that amount, it would have been done by engineering and developers combination, is that the purpose of a public improvement district, and like a city, it goes until there's a vote to dissolve it, right? Is to enhance that property for an ongoing basis. And the city council wants to improve that property to have special benefits for those residents to maintain the property value and allow that property value to increase and promote that property as it grows and as new things come up in other divisions and other subdivisions, so that you can maintain relevance to that ordinance. It's not the old subdivision. It's the subdivision that has continued to be able to be improved and provide anything from landscaping, like there's four, they're called MNO PIDs in Austin. And you can go see them, they're also on their website. And they didn't do any capital. But what they do is, is they use the MNO as a combination to make the whole region, the whole boundary, at a higher level of benefit. So, it has a higher standard of living, it provides higher amenities and new amenities as it goes on, so that it can stay relevant with other subdivisions and still maintain its property value. That's something that was not the focus of the public improvement district here, because in 2003 and forward, the focus was not necessarily on enhanced benefit other than the infrastructure itself. And the maintenance and operation was merely that money that would be used to, you know, minimally operate the public improvement district without regard to the things like the fence. You know, if people were willing to create a reserve fund or create an annual allocation of cost in order to maintain the fence every year, then you probably wouldn't have had one single expense of a half a million dollars to fix the fence. Those are the kind of things that are policy decisions that have to be made by ultimately the city council, but with the recommendation of what, and here, it was what the people wanted. The people were okay with having a wood fence. They didn't want a concrete fence, because the board went for months going, we need to set a standard that the PID residents and the PID people want. And that's what ended up with the cost versus the value of the fence. So, that's that part. But to answer your question, and you'll like this, $5.4 million was a projected cost.
Does that mean fictitious?
No. It was a projected cost that they thought was the amount of money that would need to maintain the enhanced benefits of the PID over 20 years.
So, it was a guess that?
So, educated guess.
Okay.
By professionals.
Does it have any, does it set a standard? Does it set a ceiling or set a minimum?
No.
Does it have any effect?
If, and it says this in the service and assessment plan specifically and the law, is that maintenance and operation allocation of assessments occur annually. Because if there is a significant loss, say a capital loss of going on, then there may be an assessment change, similar to that homeowners associations, right? We got to fix this thing, now we have, you know, if it's a gated community, we have to build our roads. So, now we got to change and have a special assessment for the roads, that kind of thing. Same thing here. The service and assessment plan, maintenance and operation, is discretionary each year. And in fact, I think it was '07, it was, the annual assessment was dropped after they put fencing around the pool, because they were having problems with the pool, with people going into it and doing things damaging it. And so, once they fixed that, they reduced the cost. So, annual assessments, which are maintenance and operation costs, are decided each year. And the 5.4 was a projected goal, but it is not a limitation or a cap or maximum.
I think that, I'm glad you explained that, because I think the understanding is they have to pay maintenance and operations until they get to 5.4. So, I'm understanding you, that's going to happen, because maintenance and operations was included in the PID. Every year, we do, and we reevaluate what that MNO is going to be, but we're not striving to hit 5.4 to be done. It's built into the PID. Until we figure out a way to take it out of the PID, you're going to be paying that anyway. So, that's where the perpetuity comes from, their thinking. But their thinking, from my understanding from talking with them, is they have to reach 5.4 million. And that's not the case. So, I appreciate you explaining that. And if I understood you correctly before, we, the city, can't pick up any of that cost at this point, because we haven't created a resolution and made a change in the documents to be able to do so. Is that what you said earlier?
I said that it would be inconsistent with the specifications provided in the service and assessment plan that is before you for second reading today.
George, but can you, can you explain the, you gave a recommendation to Councilmember Meyer. Can you explain that recommendation that also takes care of what Councilmember Lee is talking about?
Yes. So, if, so if you, you know, I'll use a simple example for me. Before I went to law school, I was already, had children and so forth. We paid off all of our debts. We paid off our car, we paid off those, so we didn't have those debts to pay when I wasn't working. So, same thing here. If we remove the liabilities of maintenance and operation from the PID, then there are no liabilities from which a maintenance and operations cost is there. And so, by transferring the property, that would then remove any obligation of mowing or maintenance on any of the drainage issues. If you assume the cost, I don't know who owns the well or how that well is done, but there's electrical costs and well services that make, there are means by which that we can convey or assign that obligation to the city rather than to the PID. And so, what we're basically doing is getting rid of all the bills. And so, then, when it's time to pay something, we look at it and go, oh, well, we only owe $100. So, what's $100 divided by all the properties?
That's awesome. So, can you explain, because one of the other big questions that I got was when the property owner, the second property owner bought it, and the undeveloped land, I guess it's called. And all of it was reassessed. There was a $25 million number that the residents feel was just a made-up number of the capital assessments, I believe. And then, it was reduced to 11. And then, I think I heard you say today, 7.5. Where did the 25 million come from?
I'll be happy.
And why was it reduced to 11?
So, we engaged an expert CPA in order to project, kind of an actuary, if you would, what the interest would have been on the $11,961,000 if the interest that was stated in the 2003 service and assessment plan was applied. And, because that's. in the 2003 service and assessment plan was applied. And, because that's what the original document provided for. And if you were to, if the 2003, as it sit, was somehow determined to be valid, then the capital costs would not only be the $11,961,000, but it would be the interest on the $11,961,000 since 2003.
Which is the 25.
Which, right, brings it up to the 25 million. And so that was the, in lawyer terms, that was the potential maximum liability associated with the 2003 service and assessment plan on the property owners of which they were unaware of. It was a, and so that was where that 25 million came. The fact that it was at 11 and it went to nine was only on capital, there was no interest in that. And we made sure that the interest did not reattach going forward.
Right. And then?
And then we dropped it from the nine to the seven and a half.
Yes.
Or the 11 to seven and a half through what's called a developer contribution, which is the equivalent that they waived that four and a half million dollars through my negotiations on behalf of the city.
Yeah. See, this is the first I've heard of the 7 million. I only, I thought we were still at the 11. This is the first I can recall.
There were some documents that we prepared for the open house and that actually had the numbers on it that showed where the 11, then went to nine, then went to seven and a half.
Okay. And is it your intention then to continue working with our city manager to, for a resolution for next year?
I am at your service.
That's what, so, George, can you?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. George, can you explain the, the service and assessment plan and what Councilmember alluded to, Councilmember Meyer alluded to a minute ago about the, we don't want to risk anything with the current assessments as they are today. But what is our FY25 budget? What can we do? And I believe she, you gave her a path. Can you reiterate that path one more time?
Correct. So, so in order to fund an immediate subsidy to the local government corporation for purposes of paying off maintenance operation or, or capital, however that's used, you can make a budget adjustment to allocate the funds that you wanted to contribute directly to the service and assessment plan as a payment to fund the local government corporation. And then with that, if you provide a resolution that directs the board in manner which you're recommending the board use those funds, then they would use those funds in accordance with your recommendation.
Yes.
So, and so that way, you get the funds there, but you don't do it through the service and assessment plan. Another item that just came to mind was that another mechanism that you could do here is that if you wanted to just get out of the whole service and assessment plan issue today, is that you would approve the service and assessment plan as is, and then come back with a Chapter 380 agreement that would provide a benefit to the commercial and multifamily properties to subsidize an amount and reimburse basically an amount of their costs that you find appropriate to create a better balance until we can get the next service and assessment plan developed and adopted. And so that's why I was saying that if I know where the goal of the council is, then we can bring that back to the board and we can develop that for you, because that's what they're there for, is to help you, and then bring that back for the next service and assessment plan.
So what I hear you saying is that all paths involve passing this item on second reading today, and then we still have all options available?
That provides you with the lowest potential.
Risk.
Legal liability.
So I have a, I have a motion that I think we can, because I found.
Before we get to that though?
No, I'm not going to make the motion yet.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm just, please, go away.
Councilperson Lee, were you finished? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think mine's an easy one. So I just want to make sure, do we have a lot by lot accounting of that 7.6, whatever it is, current liability? I understand, you know, there are several who, you know, paid it upfront or, you know, paid it in one lump sum as far as the, and again, I'm not talking about MNO, I'm talking about the capital.
Right.
Do we have a lot by lot accurate accounting of that?
Yes, you do.
Current debt load?
And since 2019, with the restated adopted plan, those allocations were adopted in the service and assessment plan and the one you have now by a tax assessor ID number for each parcel. And so if anyone in the, in the public improvement district wants to know what the total amount that they owe to get to finish their capital assessment, all they have to do is go look for their property ID number, the same one that's at the tax assessor's collector's office, and right beside it will be the total amount that they have left.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to make sure. And that goes back to the beginning of time when they went vertical or when they bought it or whatever it was?
Well, it, it goes back to 2019 after we took the 4.4 million dollar out of it and the, and reallocated it by parcel using this methodology that was required that had the allocation between residential, commercial, and multifamily.
So for those who had been paying prior to 2019, was that all, that wasn't just lost money, right?
No, not at all. They got credited 100% of what they were paid.
What they individually paid?
Yes, sir.
Right.
But what we did is, part of that 4.4 was a 1.2 wipe that reduced everyone's fee who had paid earlier to the same amount. So say that, that you owed 5,000 and Mayor Protim owed 4,000. So they'd cut your 5,000 down to 4,000 because he was the first one to pay, and so he had the lowest of 4,000. So that we moved everything down to give a more benefit, additional benefit on, on the residential properties so that people only paid what they owed from the beginning or less.
Okay. And where did that delta, where did that delta go?
Where did it come from?
It was what they call in the system, a developer obligation, a developer contribution, which is, which means that the developer took the hit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good negotiation.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
One second. Ms. Fosler, do you have any questions? Okay, great.
Thank you. So I did find my notes of the numbers. But what, so we had a 1, 2, 3. One was too late, can't do anything, let's keep doing, which absolutely I don't find is the answer. Option three, of course, we have to have assessment, and that's not even an option to not assess. So to contribute one half of the assessment to Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation to be used to pay down the MNO assessment for FY25, I do have a motion, unless there's other discussion.
I have a question. What's, do you know what that amount would be?
It will be in the records of last week's meeting.
Yeah, the dollar amount is, yeah, 110,783 and 50 cents.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like 3 million and we haven't budgeted that end. So, okay, thank you.
No. And I believe we could discuss, if you do go through this, we'll discuss that, adding that at a later item in the budget.
Okay.
Correct.
Could I ask a clarification?
Sure.
So this allocation is separate, I mean, it's the same subject matter, but it's separate from the approval of the second reading of the service and assessment plan? Or is it, does it modify the service and assessment plan?
Let me, I've got my motion that's going to, I do think my motion's going to answer that.
Okay, I thought, I thought you said, I apologize.
So I move to approve the ordinance 2024-23 on the second and final reading and direct staff to bring council a resolution at the next regular meeting, making a contribution to the local government corporation and an ordinance amending the budget as necessary.
Will that require us to go back to first reading? Is that a substantial change?
No, the ordinance is not changed, and we're allowed to modify the ordinance anyway in Bastrop. Now, this is just approving second reading of the assessment by ordinance and then giving staff direction to come back at the next regular meeting with two items. A resolution contributing to the local government corporation to offset the assessment amount, and then a second thing to amend the budget as necessary as this was not anticipated. So I imagine a budget amendment's required.
We have a motion on the table.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilperson Meyer, a second by Councilperson Plunkett. Is there any other discussion before we vote? Okay. Madam City Secretary, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
I don't vote.
Oh. But I wanted you to.
So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Council, thank you very much for taking, giving me this opportunity to help some of the tenure and for playing stump the lawyer. I think, I think I won, so I appreciate it.
Good job. Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, conduct a public hearing fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-29, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. That would be October 1, 2024 through September 30th of 2025. Attach as exhibit A, making certain appropriations, providing the expenditures for said fiscal year be made in accordance with said budget, updating the master fee schedule, providing the distribution severability repealer and effective date, proper notice and meeting. Ms. McElwain?
Hello. We may be about to finish this. All changes requested by city council to the proposed budget at the September 4th budget workshop have been incorporated into this budget, and no changes were proposed at the first public hearing. So if, I don't, okay. Not that I recall. So if you have any questions?
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. So I was trying to, so if somebody were to come up to me today and ask me, what is the total capital budget and what is the total MNO budget for 2025? I could not find that in the book. So is there just, because everything is broken down by fund and what have you. What is just the flat budget number we're working with for capital and MNO for 2025? Or did I just didn't know how to read?
You'll have to put it all, I do not have it all put together, but each, we have, the general fund is, does not have capital expenses in it. We do have 105, which is one-time expenses, we'll have some capital. 120 is our debt service fund, and then our bond and grant funds are all where most of our capital expenditures are. And those are all separate in the book.
So there is no, just one flat rate? You just kind of have to look through?
Yes, and I can give you that number if you'll let me go add them all together.
No, you can email it later. That's fine. I appreciate that. I also wanted to point out some numbers that I think might be transposed. On page 47 and 52, it says, the city of Bastrop is proposing $17,755,380. But then there's a table underneath it, and then the table, it says 17,773, I mean, 17,773,380.
Okay, so the narrative is, I've been working on the narrative all day, so I'm updating it to match the, these numbers down here. So when I set your final budget book at the dais on October 1st, all of that will be up there.
That's what I wanted to be sure of.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. That was all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. I really, I don't have any questions, Edie, because you've done a fabulous job. But I would encourage everyone, and I'm certainly not calling out Smithville by any means, I feel for them because they don't have their sales tax revenue. And their last meeting where they approved their budget, it was a 7.2% increase on their population, which is down from the 13% that was proposed at the beginning of the meeting. So I want us to really think about how important retail is and our sales tag is, because that's how we get the things that we want, and that's how we don't encumber our citizens. So just that point to make.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Fosler?
Hi, thanks. Just a question on the staff report. Remember last time I, like, we hadn't captured on there the retirement change from 20 to 25, or from 25 to 20 years, even though it was, it was in the budget, but it wasn't in the overview and the staff report and the bulleted items. So you got that last time, and you assured me that it was all in there. But I want to make sure also what was left off of the staff report summary is the 300,000 for the parks, the one-time?
No, I did bring that up at the last meeting. We did not, we did not put the one-time in the budget, but it, everyone is aware that it is, has been brought to you, and we, as the bids come in, we will make those budget amendments.
Okay, so that's kind of, we pre-approved that, but it'll come to us again when the time comes?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then so we get our final book, our final binder?
On October 1st.
In October, thank you.
That's my plan.
And when we get those numbers, like what is their, like what's the source data for, like the final numbers that we get in our budget? Like where is the, what's the reference for that? Like where's the source data? Like what's your, what's your internal program called?
ClearGov.
ClearGov. So it would match, our binder would match all the information in ClearGov?
This is printed straight from there.
Okay, so it would match ClearGov exactly on that day before we start amending it? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, it's time to open up the public hearing. It is 7:57. I'm opening up the public hearing on this. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody that wishes to speak on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Very quickly, at 7:57, I will close the public hearing. And if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a race to that motion.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Councilmember Lee, the second to Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9C, conduct a public.
Excuse me, mayor, can I ask one question for just clarification so we can be sure we get it? You asked for a line item that had capital and what else?
Capital and MNO.
Capital and MNO.
Okay. And that's the only thing that we need to get back with y'all? Out of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Wanted to be sure we had that for you.
9C, conduct a public hearing and consider an act on second reading of ordinance number 2024-30, adopting the tax rule, adopting the tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2024, 2025 to provide revenue for the payment of budgeted municipal expenditures and providing for tax assessment, record severability and effective date and proper notice and meeting. Ms. McElwain, the podium is still yours.
As you all have instructed me, we are leaving our tax rate at .994. So this budget, of course, is going to raise 430, approximately $432,000 more than last year's budget. 313,977 of that is actually new property. So the difference is existing property. That's all I have.
Council, any questions for Ms. McElwain? I believe we have to have specific language for this motion. Am I correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, mayor. It was in the packet.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't have my staff report in front of me.
I moved that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.4994 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 1.6 increase, 1.6% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion with Councilmember Lee, a second with Councilmember Fosler. I am so sorry. Hold that motion, if you please. We need to have a public hearing.
Holding.
It is 8 o'clock. I'm declaring a public hearing for this agenda item. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this subject?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. At 8 o'clock, I will close this public hearing. I have a motion with Councilmember Lee, a second with Councilmember Fosler. Any further discussion indicated? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will. Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item 9D. Consider an act on resolution number R-24-129, ratifying the adoption of the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year, providing for severability, provided for repeater, provided for an effective date and provided for proper notice. Ms. McElwain.
I've got nothing.
Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Well, there's a, there's specific language here.
Oh, sorry.
Specific language.
All right. Who's got the specific language?
Do we have to have a public hearing on this one?
No, ma'am. No public hearing.
Okay, I moved to ratify the vote just taken to approve the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which will raise more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for pulling those up. We have a motion from Councilmember Lee, a second from Councilmember Meyer, seeing no further questions or discussion. Madam, Mr. Assistant City Manager, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir, I will. Let's start with Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. Great job, Assistant City Manager. Great job, Ms. McElwain. Council, we're going to move some things around. I'm going to move up item 9I. Next, it is consider an act on preliminary engineering study and water and wastewater master plan conducted by Freezin Nichols as requested by Councilmember Lee and Mayor Nelson. That's an item for our City Secretary.
Actually, point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually submitted this item. I'm not sure why it says submitted by Irma Parker. I requested this item be placed on the agenda and Mayor Nelson co-signed the item.
Then please lay out the item, please.
Thank you. So a couple of budget workshops ago, I started asking some questions about a line item for a preliminary engineering study and the amount of $371,000 for the fiscal year 25 budget for the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase two. I asked some clarifying questions during the course of those two, two of the workshops regarding whether or not the study had been completed and whether or not the firm Freezin Nichols had been paid for the work performed. And the answer during the workshops was that they had not done the study and they had not been paid. During the September 4th workshop, I pointed out that our city website, in fact, stated that the study had been completed at 100% and that we were in the design phase, to which the response was, again, they had not completed the study and it had not been paid and the website was wrong. What the public doesn't know is that after that meeting, our Assistant City Manager provided Council a memo on September the 6th confirming that the study had, in fact, been done and completed at 100% by the firm Freezin Nichols, and they were paid $371,000 in the fiscal year 24 budget. I also found that a draft document was negotiated and signed by Freezin Nichols for the final design and bid phase service for the wastewater treatment plant number three, phase two expansion in the, in an amount of $8,000,89. However, that contract, according to your memo, was never brought to Council. So first, I want to thank you, Assistant City Manager, for following up on that inquiry and confirming the information, one, on our website is correct. And in the memo, you mentioned the preliminary design summary is outdated from September 2023 and that you're having some conversations with Freezin Nichols to update that study. It's, my understanding that there was some contingency built in to that study for delay of this. Do we know how much it will cost us to do the update?
No.
Hopefully not the full 370.
No, not the full 370. No, not again. Freezin Nichols was a part of our IDIQ selection firm, and so we will use the rates that we set during the IDIQ to go back and do that and use some of the contingency that is laid out already in that, whatever the cost saving was on the contract.
Do we know what that number?
I do not know what that is off the top of my head. No, ma'am. I can get that for you, though.
Okay, that's fine. So my second question is, at the time of the discussion during the workshop, our CFO stated that she was able to, she was unable to find any amounts paid toward phase two other than the $18,000. So who signs off on invoices? Does the city manager sign off on invoices?
Depends on the cost. So anything below, this particular one, 370, would have been signed off, but yes, the person, the director that's making the purchase. So you'll have a requestee, the director, the CFO, and then the city manager.
All of those people sign off.
Correct.
So the fact that it wasn't found, what does that mean? Why, why were we unable to find it?
She may have been looking in a different line item or something during, I'll let her.
These, the costs for wastewater treatment plant phase two, or number three, phase two, I think, so those POs were done way before me. Just that whole, that, that study was done before I was here, but when I was going in and looking for them, those expenses, it was, I was just looking at the accounts that I knew expenses had been charged to, and I may not have gone back far enough, but also they were code, the way, I wasn't digging into it, but they were code, or the description said wastewater treatment plant number three, and that particular study did not specify that it was phase two. So it was include, so I just automatically, I mean, discounted that as not, I mean.
And my understanding is they were, it wasn't like it was one lump sum. It was paid.
Yeah, well, they, they could have issued, it, they're done different ways. It could have issued a PO for the whole amount and pulled from that PO. It could have been done over two periods, which it looks like it was done over two, two periods of years, so they would have had a one period, one PO for FY '23 and another FY '25. They could have done it that way. It could have been broken up into multiple different phases. It could have been split between multiple different accounts and bonds. It's just, there's various ways, but we can find that and pull that for you, absolutely.
We are also doing things differently now, so that it's easier to track.
So my question is, since we have extra money, can any of that money be repurposed to help our police officers get a new car, or does it still have to be placed in for the infrastructure?
So that would have been out of, that would have been out of different funds, so that would have been out of wastewater or water funds. And so those can't go to general fund.
It can't transfer. So that money will sit there for whatever we need to pay for.
We will definitely use it for another design, for some other design for water or wastewater, absolutely.
Okay. I also wanted to point out that after going back and looking at the workshops, the city manager mentioned that we had, thank you, we had completed the water wastewater master plan and that it's now outdated. However, our website says that we have a water master plan that was done in 2022 and a drainage study, and I believe that was 2019, but the wastewater master plan is in development. So I could not find a wastewater master plan that's been completed and outdated.
Yeah, correct. We did the water master plan. We did do it and we did adopt it. We have not done the wastewater. We started, we had a series of meetings, and one of the meetings was a workshop with you guys in 2023, I want to say, in September of 2023, and we would have discussed the next steps in those phases with Freezin Nichols for the wastewater study. We paused that because it was so outdated and the data we had was not, not quite all put together yet, so we wanted to gather all the data, gather all the LUE counts from all, which we've done. We've mapped all of our LUE counts. We've mapped all of our data. We have that, and so that's part of, we're going to bring back to you guys for, to start back over that master plan and the, we'll have to revisit some of the portions of the water plan as well.
So going back to the 371 amount, because that was not included, that was included as an expenditure in the, so now at this point, that number's going to adjust a little bit because we, we don't know how much we're going to have to pay for the study, right? But that money, it was part of the 24 budget, but it wasn't included in our budget book as the 20, for being part of the budget in 2024. Does that make sense? So that needs to be adjusted there, too, right?
Yes.
And then my last question, I think, well, two more. So we have not, because I believe Freezin Nichols was about 70% done with the wastewater master plan before it was paused. So have we paid them for any of that 70% that they've completed?
I don't think it was quite that much on the percentage, but they had a schedule and they had only completed a very small portion of that schedule. I don't know what the actual dollar amounts were, but yes, we would have.
Or if they've been paid?
We, yes, we would have paid them for the amount, for whatever the work they did complete, yes.
So we can figure that out. That'd be great. And then.
Are you wanting the amount that we paid or the amount that we would need to finish the study?
Well, part of my, yeah, and I have a request in, and I will repeat that one at the end, but I, I would like to know how much of the study we, the wastewater master plan study, have we paid them up to this point? But I also understand that the wastewater master, the purpose of the wastewater master plan, it was mentioned during some of the workshops, if I remember correctly, the initial impact fees for the wastewater treatment plan was calculated at 2 MGD. And the belief is that we will eventually go somewhere from 6 to 10. So if the original impact fees, part of the study that's being done now, was calculated at the 2 MGD, as I understand it, we can't go back and change that once we approve that study. So wouldn't we not need the wastewater master plan to determine what our total actual cost is so that every development currently, every development project currently on the books is paying their proportionate share?
I'm not sure how that relates, and I'm going to, forgive me, I'm not sure how those two correlate personally, but I can, we can get that answer for you. I don't know if, because we provided, is it Nugent? We provided them a ton of data, both, all of this, not necessarily that study, because we, me and Sylvia didn't know that study really existed, but we provided them what we thought it would need to go to and some of the other information we provided, so I don't know how that goes back, but we can, I get that answer for you.
Yeah, I'm just, because we have all these projects going on and we, we're about to start phase two. We have a lot of infrastructure that needs to go in and all of these developments are going to be using that infrastructure. So I, my understanding from just reading about wastewater master plans is they will tell us where infrastructure is needed, what needs to be built, when we need to build another, whatever you call it.
And that's why we keep saying, currently, we're designing on the fly right now because we don't have a master plan to go for.
So then our impact fee is going to be off? Because we don't have the total cost of the infrastructure that we're going to need projected maybe out five years to assess the correct rate to developers. And then if, if we don't correct the, or put the right rate in and it comes in at a lower cost, we can't go back and change that cost, right? So then the residents will end up having to pick up that cost or a new development.
Correct. I feel like Sylvia would have a perfect answer for this.
Okay.
But I, but I feel like we've taken, when we set down Nugent and we went through all of the data, and, and, I mean, it was months of data, tons of spreadsheets. I feel like we calculated for all of these and we, we staff kind of had a, that we were going to go above to the 10, and I feel like we went to the extreme to the 10 and used that as part of our calculations to Nugent, but yes.
The other infrastructure that, because that's extra cost. That's just, you're just talking about the 10 MGD, not all the other extra infrastructure.
And yes, and we have, and yes, and we have some of those already online, like, some of the ones, some of the projects that we know are going to be coming forward, like the pipe bursting and those other projects, we had already counted those into it, but there are some other projects that we'll have to go forward that we aren't aware of today that can't be calculated into that number, but yes, I.
But if we had the wastewater master plan?
Possibly, yes.
Yes. So thank you for, again, finding the missing money and clarifying through tonight's meeting. And Assistant City Secretary, I will revise the requested email that I sent, narrowing down what you requested. I still want that information, but I'll do that revision and try to get it to you by the end of the week.
Absolutely.
Fair enough?
Wonderful.
And if there's any, some of the stuff I'm asking for, like contracts, what I was, which I would think would be readily attachable, so if you could send that and then if there's anything that's going to take longer than five days, just let me know. Fair enough?
Absolutely. That's, that's fine, as long as we know what we're needing and we'll get it out to everyone.
Yeah, and I don't want you to think we're being nitpicky, but we have tons of contracts and tons of different, and so if you kind of tell us the specifics, we'll definitely pull those forward.
I will.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much, and thank you for finding that.
But as, as a follow-up, Andreas, we, we're looking at deliverables, we're in the 371, and what future deliverables are in the future study. Am I correct?
Yeah, so we, we got a deliverable for the 371. We have a deliverable. We have the study. We've, I've, I've spent the last week studying that study to kind of determine what they found and see how out of date it is, and then we've also established a, a call with Freezin Nichols, and we're going to get a later date to meet with Freezin Nichols about the study and then to find out what the answers are to, how do we get it updated? What do we need to do? What's that going to cost and that kind of stuff? But we're also, part of that is, their contract is over, so I have to do the IDIQ firm and bring that contract. I have to get all that sorted out, so there's a lot of dominos that have to go right into play.
And will they do a presentation for us once the wastewater mess? Okay, great.
Yeah, we absolutely can.
Thank you. Now, it says consider an act, but I don't believe that we have any action required for this, and so we will. Thank you for that, for that inquiry and thank you, Assistant City Manager. We are moving, I'm going to move 9J up because it is a companion piece with 9E. 9J, consider an act on resolution number 2024-126, amending Article II, General Rules of Procedure and Policy, Section 2.4, Regular Meetings, by directing that meetings shall be, shall end no later than 10:00 PM. I'm reading the packet, this was an item that was put on there at the request of Councilmember Meyer. Since Sylvia's not here, is there something that you want to?
As I say, I can or?
Provide?
I, I can.
Oh, thank you.
So give a little background, the request has been made to require meetings to end no later than 10:00 PM. This is just a, kind of a, a consideration for staff that's been here all day. You know, sometimes we come in and start our days at 6:00 AM and we're here till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning and, and just some consideration to staff. So the proposed amendment to the rules of procedure will still allow Council to vote to extend, so if we get through and we're still kind of have a couple more items we need to go, we can vote, y'all, Council can vote to extend, or you can vote to table the remaining items to another meeting and then we can pick them back up at a later date. So recommendation is, from staff, of course, is general rule of procedures, Section 2.4, directing shall no later than 10:00 PM. And I'll pass it back to you, ma'am.
Thank you. The Assistant City Manager has laid this item out. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, I would. Mainly to, and definitely in respect of staff, but also in respect of our citizens because we appreciate so much you participating, but there's a limit, and there's a limit to what the people listening also. And there's a limit in our brains of how much, you know, going until midnight, it's not very efficient. It can get muddled, so I just think for overall, for everyone, that the 10:00 PM is just a consideration for everyone involved, but mainly our people, because I've, I've talked to people that even have said they would love to come to meetings, but I'm not coming to that meeting, y'all never in, and it's like, man, I wish we could get more people to participate or just watch. And then I've talked to people that say, I'd even consider running for city council, but I'm not going to sit up there all night long like y'all do. So also that, so it's just a win-win for everybody.
Councilmember Fosler?
I do like the idea of working towards that. I don't know if we need a rule, I don't know if we need to limit our future discernment. I mean, the way it's worded here is shall end no later than 10:00 PM. Are you saying that there could be leniency where at 10:00 PM, we, we take the, we take the question and we decide what essential business we have? Because I'm, I'm fine with that at 10:00. We automatically review what essential business we have left, but I wouldn't want to limit limit our future, future discernment.
Yeah, correct. If it's, you know, if it's 10:00 PM and we have two more items, we might as well finish the two items, you know, so some leniency, yes.
Okay. Another thing we have, we've recently enacted the five minute per council member rule and we've barely had a chance to embody that, so I, I think one thing we could also do is really start, and that can be our start enforcing that. I also would like to start moving our executive sessions to before the meeting, that would really great when we are most fresh and alive. I think, I think 5:00 has been like a, a usual start time, I, I'm not sure if that works for everybody still, but it works for me. So yeah, moving our agenda, our executive agenda to earlier in the day, really being good about enforcing and abiding by our five-minute rule. And then if, and also if an agenda item doesn't have documentation in the packet, it can automatically be tabled to the next one, I think that used to be customary practice. So I don't know if it needs to be a rule, cause we have so many good, I think we're all working towards that, but it's so long as we have, we can vote to extend it and, and have the discussion, then I'm fine with it, and so long as we can have executive before.
Are you wanting to add those other items in, or you just want, you just wanna make that point that you want that?
Everybody was nodding their heads for the earlier and the executive, I don't think we need a rule around that.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need a rule, we can, we can normally do that from the agenda review part of it, and that, that's, that's normally been standard practice to move the executive session around.
Thank you, I just needed clarify, clarification, just in case somebody thought that we wanted to add that or not, so just so.
Did you wanna make that a, a normal practice from now on, that our executives are at the beginning? Or is that just occasional times? Yes, she, I.
That was, yeah, that was the question I was asking, how do you want us to address that?
So the executive sessions, especially if it's gonna be a long agenda, we're always at the beginning. I've been to some starting as early as 4:30, which is really hard for me coming from Austin, cause I never know what the traffic is, and my poor little dog won't get to go out if it's at 4:30. But 5:00 I can do, 5:00 is doable even if there is traffic, but that's the way that it has always been. It had always been the executive session, especially if it was a really long night and our agendas are really long, would be before the meeting. Cause that also helps us watch our time, we only got an hour and a half, let's get our conversations done in executive session. Cause if you think about it, whenever 9, 9:30 gets here, we're in executive session.
Yeah.
I don't know any council meeting that we actually sat on the dais and opened session past 9, 9:30, maybe 10. Most of that time, we're in executive session. So if we can move that forward, also, there's a lot of items that we don't take any action on. Maybe if we can look at putting those maybe toward the end of the agenda order, that way we're taking care of all the business that needs to be taken care of, and then if we're coming down to the wire, we can, we have our no action items that we might can flip to the next meeting.
Yeah, correct.
When we're running late.
I think the question was, do we necessarily need a hard and fast rule for that to start that meeting? I don't, I don't believe we do. I think we need to exercise some level of discretion based upon changing dynamics of the calendar, the schedule, the, the, the level of work at hand, that's just, that's just my thought process. Council Member Meyer?
No, I totally agree on that, because that, how could we say that if we didn't really know, right? On the executive session, so I think that, that thought is 100% Mayor, but if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Any further discussion? I, I'd like to add, so I, I think in thinking of our, of our citizens, I think when we publish an agenda, our citizens are expecting something to be on the agenda, that we need to exercise our caution in how we present our agenda and discuss and debate those agenda items. Once we put those agenda items off until either the following day or to the following meeting, there, there may be an opportunity or a chance that we're going to disenfranchise some of our citizens' participation in that. And that was a, and I appreciate the motion, but that, that was something that I was going to suggest and discuss prior to, prior to the motion and as we take a vote with additional discussion, I'd like for y'all to take that in consideration. Council Member Fosler.
I have a similar thing I wanna say, I am gonna vote for this, but I also am also very cognizant of any time, like, we publish an agenda and people are here to say something about it and they have a right to say something about it. So I'm just aware, I want us to be aware of that as we, as we start practicing this, because that's very important, first and foremost.
Thank you. Council Member Meyer?
Just one more point, and I agree with you 100%. And I think that's where we can also consider the order of items on the agenda, and let's get all the, the business done where the people are gonna be here and wanna speak, let's get that done early. So, so we do give them that opportunity, that's critical. So I agree with you 100% on that.
Council Member Fosler, you have additional thoughts? Okay, we have a motion, Council Member Meyer, I'm sorry, I did not hear who did the second. Council Member Plunkett, any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council Member Meyer?
Yes.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Council Member Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. We'll move back to page three, item 9E, consider an act on resolution number R-2024-125, amending the rules of procedure for the city council and boards and commissions as presented and approved to April 29th, July 9th, and August 13th, 2024, regular meetings provided for findings of fact, repealer severability, effective date, proper notice. Madam City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor and Council. During those several, several meetings, y'all made several amendments, and we didn't go and put all of them together so y'all could see it and then actually do another policy procedure book so you'd have everything there. So this is what we wanted to do, is have one approved document that you could see showing all of the changes that had been done. And now we're gonna be adding another thing, but that's okay. We'll just do another one and we will show that change on the document, but at least we have one document that has the meeting dates, those three meeting dates where y'all made significant changes, and we wanted to be sure we had something in place so y'all knew exactly what had been approved. So Sylvia, any questions?
Capture those all in, in one fell swoop. Council Member Fosler?
I, I was under the assumption that we would be changing our rules and procedures every July, it's not a rule, but it was kind of our custom. And so I do have two waiting in the wings that I haven't brought forward, and I'm not gonna do that tonight, obviously, but so, and I think after the, after the vote in November, there will need to clean up some charter language as well. So is now the time? Should we table it a few months when we? It's just, it's just paper.
I, I believe we need to adopt rules of procedure so, so we can have, have something to work from.
I'm good with that.
I think the reason we adopted it in July is after new council members come and play and they may have some thoughts and ideas on how to advance the business of the city. That does not mean that we do not have the power and authority to make changes as, as dictated or needed throughout the year. So yes, I, I agree, but it's normally July when we do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Council Member Meyer?
Yes, I was just gonna say thank you, because I've got so many different meeting notes on when we made agreements on the policy, and then we did this, and redlined items and greenlined, so thank you for having it all very concise.
Thank you.
Move to a proof. I have a motion by Council Member Plunkett, a second by Council Member Meyer. One other point I wanna make up before we, before we call for the vote, is that last year, this past fiscal year, we've had 11 special meetings. And that, that, sometimes that can get quite cumbersome to have a regular scheduled meeting and then a special meeting. So I would like for us to capture as much as we can during a regular meeting. That being said, no further comment or questions indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Council Member Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Council Member Fosler?
Yes.
Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9F, consider an act on resolution number 2024-121, approving changes to the Bastrop Economic Developments Corporation Revolving Loan Fund, the RLF program, repeating all resolutions in conflict and providing for an effective date. Madam, uh, madam, Mr. Assistant City Manager?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council. EDC Board adopted a small business program with Rosco Bank. This is the revolving loan fund. It assists with business retention and expansion, which is BDC's core principles. They revised that program to make the EDC the loan, I think that's guarantor, guarantor, instead of the originator. Staff seeking to change their RLF, RLF policy to match what has newly been adopted. The applicant will first apply with the Rosco State Bank, and this will be for credit checks and other limitations, and then EDC may guarantee the loan by moving the loan funds to a restricted account. The restricted account would then pay Rosco in the event of the application, applicant's default. Rosco Bank worked with the board on basic term sheets, which are included in the agenda packet. The program description was modified to show a guarantee, not a loan, and has removed the application packet. The EDC Board approved this change as a resolution in August 26th, and now it requires the council's approval. This is kind of, it's hard to see, but this is kind of a, we have a process already laid out that's in the packet, it's for the draft there. Any questions? I think that's it.
The Assistant City Manager has laid this out, do we have any questions for, for, for him, any concerns? Council Member Plunkett?
Someone brought it to my attention, but I think they were mistaken, that there were some conflicting phrases in there about whether or not the money could be used for real estate improvements or any, in any way, but I think they just misread it. Did anybody else catch a conflict like that in there? Okay, yeah, I think they, I think it's that next sentence where it says they, that in the things that it's not allowed to do, right, the ineligible ones, that it is not, that you can't do it for things that are not in the city limits. So I, I'm pretty sure that's probably where that came from, and I just wanted to make sure that nobody else caught anything like that.
Thank you. I see no further questions or comments indicated, all entertaining motion. Move to a proof.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Member Plunkett, a second by Council Member Meyer. Any questions, any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Council Member Meyer?
Yes.
Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Council Member Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Council. In regards to our earlier question about taking care of people's businesses, I'm gonna move to 9K, consider an act on resolution number R-2024-110, approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County regarding surveying a portion of land located south of Hunter's Crossing, east of State Highway 304, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing execution of all necessary documents upon request and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, and proper notice in meeting. Mr. Rosales?
Yes, sir. We are wanting to establish an interlocal agreement or an ILA with Bastrop County. This will be for the Hunter's Crossing drainage area that is on the south side of Hunter's Crossing, it also goes into the county, and so we're gonna partnership, but we are asking for the city to be allowed access. The county was granted the right of entry to the county, and so we are going to use those rights of entries that have already been given to the county through this ILA. The city is going to perform a survey related to the drainage. We've already, one of our IDIQ engineering firms, we've already, that has a survey team, we've already engaged, and we will have them go out and do the drainage surveying. And the city and county will cooperate regarding any future drainage work based on the survey. So once we get those survey results, we'll come up with a plan, figure out what our, what our path forward is. This is complaint-driven, we've received numerous complaints of flooding in the area. As you can see here, this is, the, the area in the green is the area of work, 304 on your right side, Colin, do you know how to, how you make this deal? Oop. Uh, go ahead. 304 is on the right side, that's the southern portion of Hunter's Crossing, I believe that is outfitter on the top left side. And so that area in green is where we're gonna do the survey work, and then once we determine what needs to be changed, modified with, in partnership with the county, we'll have those discussions, and if need be, we'll bring it back to you guys for approval.
Yes, Assistant Manager pointed out last night, the flooding doesn't stop at the city limits.
Does not.
It moves on, and I wanna express appreciation to Commissioner Moit for, for his willingness to work with us on this. Council, the Assistant City Manager has laid this out, any questions or comments for him? Move to a proof. I have a motion by Council Member Lee and a second by Council Member Plunkett. I have a question from Council Member Fosler.
In the scope of work, that is just for us, right? Like a staff report? Okay, there's a little parcel number mixed up, but it's no big deal.
Yeah, that scope of work is what we wrote, what we've written to give to the, the survey and team.
Okay, well, if we're gonna do that, then let me just tell you about a little inversion.
Sure.
Where the number is, it's in that scope of work on the first page, it says parcels to the east in parentheses, that 36554 should be 36544. And it's correct in the first part of the paragraph.
Got it, I will make a note.
So that's going to them, that'd be nice.
Yes, I will make a note and we'll get it corrected.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion, we have a second. No further questions or discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Is that motion gonna be with that amendment? Do you want that?
The motion should be with that correction.
With that correction?
Yes.
Okay, is that, that's okay with everybody? Okay. Just wanna double check here. Council Member Lee?
Yes.
Council Member Plunkett?
Yes.
Council Member Meyer?
Yes.
Council Member Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9L, consider an act on resolution number R-2024-128, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a change order on initial contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company for additions to the scope of work valued at $340,000 and provided for the total amount of the contract not to exceed, not to exceed $1,625,000 for the purchase of high-density mineral bond, the HO, HA5, treatment for asphalt pavement and traffic control through the use of the city of Hurst Interlocal Purchasing Agreement previously approved, resolution number R-2024-16, authorizing the execution of all necessary documents upon request, providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice in meeting. Mr. Rosales?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Council, this is for, the original contract we did this summer was for 1.3 million, was not to exceed 1.3. State law allows us to increase contracts by 25%, so we have some additional streets that we wanna add to the HA5 project for FY '24, we're gonna get these done pretty quickly. The 1.3 million plus 25% is the 1.625. The initial scope contract was for 1,214,285, plus the new change order that we're bringing forward is 340,000. It equals the 1.5, or sorry, 1554285, which is below the 1,625,000, which is allowed to add to this contract. So part of that, oops, I guess I didn't, I have some streets. John, do you know what the streets are specifically? I had those listed, I, I don't know why they're not in the PowerPoint. Do you know them off the top of your head or no?
They're on the contract.
Yes.
Kubol, Hillo, Ori, Mokulalu, Water Street, Spring Street, Elm Street, Pecan Street, Austin Street, Emel Street, Sterling Street, Main Street, Cedar Street, and Perkins Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, those streets, thank you. Yep, those streets will be the ones added to, to get completed with HA5 this go-around in additional, I think the contractor had some time available trying to get it squeezed in.
So it'd be a bit more aggressive on a street repair program, I think.
Yep.
It's a great idea. Council Member Lee?
Thank you, mayor. So I went back to look at the original agreement with them.
Yes.
Because I wanted to see what streets were done.
Yes.
Before, and it didn't list it. So two things, on the, on our website, there's a link, ha5roads.com. And when this first started, residents could go in, click in that link to see the project and what roads were done and completed. That link is not working.
Yes, we're going to.
Just so you know that, it says, it says page not found, so I don't know.
We're going to update it with the new maps that were, will be for this project. We'll update the, the new streets, the rap, the map, the phasing, what dates these are going to be associated with, and when your street's going to be done. Because we'll have to go through the same process where you won't be able to park and all that stuff. So we'll have, we'll update that new, I believe Colin, y'all are working on that. You had a meeting today, correct? Oh, tomorrow morning. And so we will get that updated. Yes, ma'am.
And then what I was looking for, because someone asked me, remember I told you all the link? There used to be a link where we could see. So someone wanted to know how many streets, what streets have been done with that HA5 now? And if you don't know the names now, that's great, or how many have been completed with the first phase?
Yeah, I think we estimated, what did we say, 35 miles previously? But we'll get all the streets. So yes, we can update a new, we'll, we'll put a page and we'll list the streets that have currently, what streets were done in what year? And that way we can tell, because we're going to be tracking that as well. Because we're going to, we're going to do this every couple of years. So we'll bring back those streets in five years, eight years, whatever the timeframe.
That was my next question. After this phase two, will there be any more streets?
Yeah, so FY '25 will have more streets.
Okay.
We're just trying to, we, we have the availability in this change order or with this change order for this contract. And the contractor is available currently. So we wanted to throw some extra streets in there, get them done. And then FY '25 will have more that we will bring forward with the, with the budget approval.
Well, I want to say thank you because I was here when most of these streets are literally dirt roads. And to ride down some of these streets now, every time I get on one, I'm like, oh, I want them to come to my street. They look great. And I'm so thankful that you, that this council and our staff got that done for Bastrop. It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, and I know we, we haven't forgot about water. We haven't forgot about Linden, and we haven't forgot about Mesquite. We have, those streets are still on our list. They are going, they will be in FY '25. We're just going through the design, some other additional stuff. But yes, we'll, we'll put that list out there and let you know.
Keep hitting those targets of opportunity.
Yes, sir.
I like that. All right, the city, Assistant City Manager has laid this out. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosler, I have a second with Councilmember Meyer. No further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9M. Consider an act on resolution number R-2024-124. Awarding a contract as, as attached in Exhibit A for the Bastrop Power and Light five-year system study to McCord Engineering, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $75,000. Authorizing execution of all necessary documents upon request, providing for the findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor, council, yes, we're bringing forth McCord Engineering. It is for a five-year study. In the past, LCRA had conducted those studies for us. I think they did probably what, the last three, four studies? And they're five years, every five years. So it, our current CIP projects for BP&amp;L have ended. It is time for '25 through 2030 to do those study. And we would like to get started pretty quickly. So we're bringing this contract forward to you. For McCord, LCRA had, I guess, also bid on this, but they were at a higher price. So we went with McCord, who is currently one of our engineering firms that does feasibility studies, knows our system really well. They are doing some other engineering work, any line extension, any of that kind of stuff. We referenced to them already at that point. And also I think LCRA is kind of changing up their engineering abilities. So we've chosen to go with McCord instead. Any questions?
We're due for a study. Any questions? Councilmember Fosler.
Ah, got it. I called Assistant City Manager earlier today, and we had a good chat about this. And one of the things I also wanted to point out is that McCord will not be able to bid on the work because they only do studies. So that's, there'll be no conflict of interest. They won't be coming back to us to do the work.
Correct. They're a design firm only.
Good point. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion or questions indicated, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have, I'm going to give it to, I'm going to give it to the lady. A motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? None indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move back up on page four to item 9H. Presentation regarding the status of the recall petition. We have had a request to move this to executive session to answer some questions in consultation with our attorney under 551.071. It is 8:45. Counsel is in executive session. I'll reread this agenda, item 9H. Presentation regarding the status of the recall petition. Madam City Secretary.
Yes, sir. And I think we need to do that in one other agenda.
Item as well, sir. The Texas Municipal League voting for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, on Friday, September 13th, at 6:16 PM, I sent an email to Mayor Protem Kirkland, who circulated the petition. And this is my letter that I submitted to him. I'm writing to inform you that I reviewed the petition you presented in July 2024. I certify your petition is sufficient to present to the voters at a May 2025 election. The format and requirements of Chapter 277 of the Texas Election Code were followed in your petition. There is no requirement in Chapter 277 to require an affidavit of circulator. However, you did include that affidavit in your petition. Our charter required another type of affidavit, which was confusing. I requested assistance from the Office of the Secretary of State, our chief election officer of the state of Texas. I included Section 10.07 of the Home Rule Charter that contained that confusing requirement. The petition shall be signed and verified in the manner required for initiative petition. Shall contain a general statement of, of the grounds upon which the removal is sought. And one of the signers of each petition paper shall sign, shall make, an affidavit that the statement, statements made therein are true. The response I received from the Secretary of State stated, your ability to apply that requirement, the affidavit, would depend on whether those requirements were in place on September 1, 1985. The city of Bastrop did not adopt a home rule charter until early 2000. Therefore, that requirement was not in place as of 9/1, 1985. To comply with the affidavit requirement, I asked you to fix the mistake. We discussed it as a council meeting, where someone stated that we didn't have to provide the fix. Your efforts to fix the mistake was creative, especially considering that you were not given any direction. In my opinion, we should always remember that we work for the citizens. If the city has specific requirements, we should provide assistance or direction. We work for the citizens. In conclusion, the power belongs to the people of this great city. Over 1,575 registered voters have expressed a desire to hold an election to recall Mayor Lyle Nelson. Thank you.
Okay, council, the city secretary has laid out those items and as well as provided some, some, some opinion. Do we have any questions, comments for the city secretary? This is only a report of, you know, action. I have a couple of questions. How do, how do we handle, in cases such as this, how do we handle duplicate signatures?
Duplicate signatures were not counted. There was over 1,700 and something, I can't give you the exact number, but I think I did present it at the first meeting that I spoke on the recall. There was that total number of signatures that were in there. We reduced the total number by, I don't remember the exact number, but we did, and I had presented it earlier. And we did reduce every, take out everybody's name that had asked to be taken off. But the requirement was that I only had to have 1,575. And we reached that threshold. We also did have several people that came afterwards and asked. Apparently there was some memo or something that went out to everybody that signed the petition and had some other additional facts. So there were some people that came in and asked to have their name taken off. We took those certificates. We did not take anything, take any action. I think we did send y'all copies. But we did take those into consideration, and it was like three or four. The fact remains that the actual total of signatures was well over the 1,775. So we met that threshold of the number, and that was the biggie.
That wasn't my question. My question was how to retrieve duplicate signatures, so thank you. And I think the number was 1557.
I'm not really.
And that's fine. It's, it's a moot point at this time. So to, to clarify, did we consult our city attorney prior to taking, making any decisions?
I spoke to the city manager, and we went through all of the details. I report to the city manager, sir. And that's some of the decisions that were made.
Okay, so the city attorney was not.
Well, he was, all through this process, he's weighed in and given his opinion. Just because we get an opinion, we, we took it in consideration. I can't say that we just ignored him. But we, we did, that was just another opinion. There was also another lawyer that also made an opinion that if you have, as you well know, if you have two lawyers, you'll get six opinions. And we were getting them all around and trying to figure out who was on first and who was on second. The fact was that it was, the people spoke, and that was the big decision.
I, I understand that. My question is for, to, to help mitigate any liability to the city, to make sure that we had appropriate legal counsel.
We did have the, we did hear, we did hear from him. Yes, sir, we did.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we, we did hear.
I will, I will finish, I will finish my question. Prior to us making, making any decision, you've answered the question. I appreciate that. Councilmember Lee.
City Secretary, were you part of the petition?
And what are you asking? I don't understand what the question means.
Were you part of the distribution of the petition?
No.
Okay, because you keep saying we met, we met. It should be the petitioners met, because the city should not have been involved, been involved in.
When I said we, I was talking about city staff, and I'm sorry, I didn't explain that correctly. I met with the city manager on several occasions, and the Assistant City Secretary, and the different individuals that went through the petition pages and verified and went through the process with them. And the city attorney sent us several opinions. We looked at that as well. So we took a lot of stuff into consideration. It's, I think what, what was being asked of me earlier was whether we listened at all to Allen, and we did.
No, you made, you made the statement, we met, we met multiple times, as if the city was leading this petition. And we were not.
No.
The petitioners met the petition. And the opinions that I received from the city and the city's attorneys were that the petition was insufficient. So yes, we did get how many opinions? At least three, from three different attorneys. And for public knowledge, they were deemed insufficient.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So the duty to certify or not certify lies with you, is that not right, Irma? With the city secretary?
That was what was mentioned several times at the meeting.
I thought I remembered that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further questions are indicated. Appreciate your, your due diligence on this matter. We will move to item 9G, hopefully the last item of the evening. Consider an act to adopt resolution number R-2024-127. Casting a ballot for the election of places 11 through 14 to the Board of Trustees for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool for a six-year term. Madam City Secretary.
Yes, mayor and council. It's that time of the year that we start voting on our representatives to TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool. And the terms are for six years. The, the positions that are available is place 11 through 14. You did receive information on each one of those individuals that were running for those spots. They do a very good job for us in helping us get good rates and good insurance. And so they do a very good job for the city. So I just, I don't know how you want to go through this, mayor. If you want to vote for each, each one, or just about one ballot for, I don't know how you want to do it.
I think because there's multiple candidates on, for each one of the places, except for one, if I'm not mistaken, that we may want to, it's, it's, it's up to the desire of the council of whether or not we want to move on each one of them or move on collectively. I don't know how we're going to be able to move on collectively if, if we have multiple names on there.
It's your pleasure, sir.
It's, it's, let's move on to them individually because of the multiple names.
Okay. Place 11, Chriswell and Davis.
Is there a single candidate on there?
No, this is two candidates, Randy Chriswell, he's the incumbent, and Robert Davis.
And where is Mr. Chriswell from, and where is Mr. Davis from?
He's currently city manager of Woolforth. It's in Region 3. And Robert Davis serves as city attorney for the city of Bullard in Region 15.
She has presented Mr. Davis and Mr., what was the other name? Chriswell. One of them's a city attorney, one of them's a city manager. Do I have a recommendation or a nominee from those, for one of those two?
I'd make a motion to nominate Robert S. Davis.
I have a nomination.
Second.
Councilmember Fosler, a second from Councilmember Lee. Any other nominations? Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Not, not a nomination. Why, why him? I mean, there's only two. You got to pick one, but.
I'm always a fan of having more legal representation on boards. I've become very fond and reliant of legal representation.
Got it. Okay.
Good answer. Okay, are you all good with the nomination? Mayor Protem, your light is still on. Are you all good with the nomination? On this nomination, we will move on, mark that nomination. We'll move on to the second nomination and take all of these in one fell swoop as a motion.
Okay. Place 12, Cedric Davis is city manager of the city of Mathis in Region 11. Rocky Hawkins, Hawkins, he's a council member for the city of Gladwater, which is in Region 15. Allison Hayward, she's the incumbent in place 12. And she serves as a council member for the city of Shirts in Region 7. And the last one is Rudy Sepeda, and he serves as finance director for the city of Santa Fe in Region 14.
Counsel, it's up to y'all, but I'd like to get somebody close to home, and that's, Shirts seems to be the closest one. But we'll gladly take nominations.
You just took the words out of my mouth. I was looking at the same thing. I nominated Allison Hayward for that very reason.
I have a nomination of Ms. Hayward.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, mark it down.
Is she going to be too busy?
Okay. Place 13, Harlan Jefferson, incumbent. And he's a deputy city manager for the city of Burleson in Region 13. And James Quinn, city administrator of the city of Hutchins, and he's in Region 13.
It's one of y'all's, one of those two names fancy. Your pleasure.
Motion for Hutchins.
I have, I have a nomination from Councilmember Meyer.
I don't see that name on the ballot.
It's James Quinn.
It would be James Quinn.
Did you not say Hutchins?
City of Hutchins.
City of Hutchins.
Thank you.
Close enough.
The Hutchins. Second person, the one from Hutchins.
Quinn from Hutchins, there you go.
Yes, that's it.
So I have, I have a nomination and a second, I believe, I heard from that. Mark it down.
Okay, and place 14, Mike Land.
Motion for Mike Land.
Second.
Mark it down.
So the resolution will include the names of, for place 11 would be Robert S. Davis. Place 12, Allison Hayward. Place 13, James Quinn. And place 14, Mike Land. So is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Fosler. Counsel, I will let you all.